Good afternoon, everyone. The joint meeting of the Sacramento City Council and Housing Authority of the City of Sacramento will please come to order. Would the Clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Lulowee.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontis, we absent today. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protam Feng.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Protam Feng, would you lead us in the land acknowledgement? I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Win Two peoples, and the people of Walton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally-recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' histories, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, everyone. So, members, you probably know this, but since we have new members here, and for members of the public that are watching, that there are times about quarterly when we meet in joint session, if you will, as the Sacramento City Council and the Housing Authority. And we are one of the same because the council serves as the Housing Authority, but we separately designate the Housing Authority meetings because it says to the public and us, we're focused in this afternoon on housing issues. And of course, we have an expert team and an expert staff led by LaChelle Dozier, the executive director of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And so she sits up here during this meeting instead of the city manager. So that's just a little bit of the basics. But, you know, we sit in the same seats and follow through on our public duties. So we've got two items today. And why don't I turn it over to LaChelle, Ms. Dozier, to describe what we're going to be asked to look at today?
Our first item is our one-year action plan, federal programs. And we have Stephanie is going to give the presentation. And this is our first meeting where we kind of kick off our activities for community development block grant in our federal programs. So Stephanie?
I do have a PowerPoint, so let's start it. So good afternoon, mayor and city council. As LaChelle mentioned, my name is Stephanie Green. I'm the federal programs manager at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And today I'll be presenting to you the first workshop on the 2024 annual action plan for four of our federal entitlement grant programs for the City of Sacramento, which are the Home Investment Partnership or HOME program, the ESG or Emergency Solutions Grant Program, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS or HOPWA, and finally, the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program. And the CDBG program will be the primary focus of the workshop today. This will be the first of two workshops at city council on the 2024 action plan. And the purpose of today's workshop will be a high-level overview of the funding requirements, the estimated entitlement, and past allocations, the approval process, and most importantly, to provide an opportunity for you, the elected officials, and the public to ask questions and provide input about which projects should be considered for these funds. So to start, as a little background, the objectives for CDBG funding are developed through our analysis of impediments to fair housing and our consolidated planning processes. Every five years, we prepare analysis of impediments, or AI, which identifies the barriers to fair housing throughout the city. The current AI was approved by city council in 2019. And the issues identified in that analysis help us to prepare goals and objectives for overcoming those challenges. Those goals are included in the consolidated plan, which covers a five-year planning process. Then every year, you as the city council approve an action plan, which identifies the projects and programs that utilizes those funding sources I outlined earlier. Overall, the primary objective is to help create ladders of opportunity for our low and moderate income residents throughout the city through three different avenues. The first being affordable housing, the second, public facilities and infrastructure, the third, public services. And you will see these different categories reflected in how CDBG funds are distributed in our action plan. When deciding how to spend CDBG funds, we must ensure they're spent on projects that meet a national objective. The vast majority of CDBG expenditures must meet the national objective of being an activity that benefits low and moderate income persons. This can be an activity that benefits an area of lower moderate income, which means it needs to be in a location that's primarily residential, and at least 51% of the residents need to be at lower moderate income. In this category, the project is evaluated based on being located in that eligible area. We also provide funding directly to low and moderate income people, which is individuals or households at or below 80% of the area median income. And lastly, we also fund low and moderate income housing. This helps provide housing to individuals and households below 80% of the AMI, and this is usually provided in the form of gap financing for an affordable housing rehab project. In addition to meeting the national objectives, it also must be an eligible activity. The broad categories of major eligible activities include public facilities and infrastructure. For example, this could be a community center, a park, playground, streetscape, lighting project. Public services, and this, for example, could be meals on wheels or homeless shelter operations. Acquisition, for example, the acquisition of property for a housing or public facility project. Clearance and remediation projects, and this could be for cleaning up a site with toxic contamination to be developed as future housing or public facility. Home ownership assistance, planning and admin, so this is staff costs, and environmental studies. It's also important to highlight other ineligible activities, such as spending money on general government buildings and expenses. For example, we can't pay to renovate a government building. Operating and maintenance expenses. This could be custodial staff, cleaning, et cetera. Purchasing of new equipment and furnishings, new housing construction, although we can pay for rehab. Political and religious activities, and regional parks and facilities. The major keyword here is regional. We can support parks and facilities, but they need to be at more of a community or neighborhood benefit. Next, I'll identify the estimated 2024 funding entitlements for the city and how the entitlement was allocated in the previous year. So all of the federal programs listed here are formula grant programs, meaning that HUD uses a formula by which they identify the funding for us each year and how much we will get. We typically receive the final approved amount from HUD in April of each year, so for planning purposes, we base this year's estimated entitlement on what was approved in the previous year, anticipating no change in entitlement. For 2024, in the city, we're estimating we will get about $4.5 million for CDBG funds. For the HOME program, we're estimating about $2.8 million. And these HOME funds usually go to acquisition and construction of multifamily affordable housing projects. For the ESG program, we estimate about $400,000, and this goes to help people who are unhoused, for example, through rapid rehousing, rental assistance, and operations of emergency shelters. HOPWA, we are expecting about $1.7 million, and the bulk of this goes to operating programs and physical permanent units as part of a multifamily project. Overall, we're estimating about $9.4 million for these federal programs in the city. As I mentioned previously, the primary focus of this workshop is to allocate the CDBG funds. So as an example of how these funds are typically divided among the programs, this table shows how CDBG was divided up in last year's action plan. We gave about $1.1 million to infrastructure and public facility improvements, $1.2 to affordable housing, $600,000 to public services, and public services can be a max of 15% of entitlement, and these funds usually go to both homeless activities and meals on wheels. About $740,000 to grant planning and admin, and this can be a maximum of 20% of the entitlement and is used to pay for staffing and admin costs. $722,000 for the HUD loan repayment, and this is for repaying a Section 108 loan for the Marisol Village project. And the last category is capital reserve, which we reserved $117,000, and this is essentially a contingency bucket. And then the next few slides go over all the projects that were approved over the 2020 through 2023 year, which is our consolidated planning period. And these have been adjusted to reflect the new council districts. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but generally, the columns indicate the projects, the years they were funded, the district, and then the mount. And you'll see that this represents the breadth of different investments in infrastructure projects and different types of projects we typically fund. So you'll see in District 2, we funded design and construction of parks, as well as a master plan, and an infrastructure study and road diet, and a school access improvement project. In District 3, we have a park master plan and signal improvement project. In District 4, sorry, in District 4, we have an ADA restroom, complete streets, and engineering and construction, a basketball court, and access improvement project, and a light study. District 5, we have park design and construction, complete streets, and the tree nursery improvements proj-- I'm sorry, access improvements project. In District 6, we have a traffic signals project and design construction and a master plan for some parks. District 7 shares the Broadway Complete Streets project with District 4. And finally, District 8 has a streetscape and design and engineering of some parks. As you can see, some districts may have more projects than others, and it's important to remember that projects have to be located in an eligible low mod area. Some districts happen to have more eligible low mod areas than others, so it can sometimes be difficult to find projects in some districts. In District 1, for example, there were no low mod areas previously, but with the redistricting, there now are some CDBG eligible areas. So we look forward to talking about projects in that area. The next few slides will outline the process moving forward to identify projects for the annual action plan. This process aligns with the city capital improvement programs, which are on a fiscal year as opposed to our calendar year, and this alignment allows us to work together at the same time that the city is preparing their capital improvement projects. So I'll just give you the highlights. In December, we initiate the process with city staff. In January and February, we meet internally with city staff to discuss potential projects. In January and February, we also hold our first public action plan workshop, which is this one, for city council. And this workshop today, as I mentioned, is the first workshop there. In February and March, we continue meeting with staff to narrow down projects and confirm project eligibility. Then in March and April, we do a community workshop with a draft list of projects at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Then in April and May, we head back to city council with the draft list of projects, and this coincides with timing of the CIP project approval. Then we hold additional meetings with staff in May and June to fine-tune the projects, and everything wraps up in August when we finalize the projects and budgets. It then takes about three months to get through the whole public review process required by HUD, as well as the staff report process for the final action plan. After that, we come back to the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission in September before it goes to city council for approval in October. We then submit the action plan to HUD by November 15. Once again, this is the first public workshop, so we welcome any ideas or input you have on projects either now, or you can reach out to us anytime in the coming months, or at the next workshop that is scheduled for May 9. Thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions or comments.
Thank you for the very good thorough presentation. We appreciate it. Is there public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I do have one hand raised online to make public comment. Call in user one.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert, and I'm listening to-- that's why I study things like this. I'm listening, and it's amazing, but District 2 had no projects. It's stunning. In a district that big, that wide, that drawn up, that there's not one project there. And I also noticed that that's amazing to me. I mean, that's a big district in terms of how it's drawn, and there's no projects. I can name about 10 places there could be projects. And I just grew up there, so that's why I know. But I think that should be investigated. Mayor and Mr. Lulowee should be up in arms because it's his district. So that needs to be improved. It's just like the mayor's going around the town, talking to all the districts. District 2 didn't have something for them and the mayor regarding this. And just talking town halls. I mean, here we are, winning state titles and bringing all kinds of great publicity to the city of Sacramento, and we can't get any improvements in the projects, and we can't get a town hall meeting. We have an auditorium at Grant High School, one of the best auditoriums in Sacramento, where you can hold that. And I guarantee you, the mayor would be welcomed. He's very welcomed in Pacer country. So that should be improved. I think that's intentional. Get some improvement projects going on in District 2. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I have no more speakers.
We'll go a little out of order here from the queue. Councilmember Lulowee.
I just want to make a quick point. Thank you very much for the call, Mr. Davis. Actually, in the very beginning of this meeting, there was a list of projects in District 2. I think there's about five, if I'm not mistaken. So I appreciate the call, Mr. Davis. And I believe the mayors are on invite lists. We haven't picked a date yet, so.
We haven't, but I've been doing a series of town halls, and I'm coming to District 2.
Oh, I know. We were actually waiting to roll out the red carpet for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to the queue. Ms. Dozier, did you have a comment before? Okay. Then Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Dozier and staff, for the presentation. I appreciate always the way you conduct this process, so we have lots of opportunity to give input. One item I did want to put on the radar early as we're designing this is emergency rent assistance. I know SHRA is very familiar with the fact that there were lots of people in all of our districts who were waiting on emergency rent assistance that didn't get it because we ran out of money before we could get to everybody. And it's obviously way cheaper to keep people housed than it is to try to get them housing once they've been evicted or ended up on the street. So I definitely-- I know this will probably be a drop in the bucket compared to the backlog that I know we have on those applications, Ms. Dozier, but anything we could do to try to free up some money to get more of those folks the relief they need would be appreciated. That's it.
Sorry. Vice Mayor Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A couple just points here. One, thank you for that great presentation, but in the future, Ms. Dozier, if we can have the PowerPoint sent to us in advance or included in the staff report, so we can kind of look at where we are on that scope. I appreciate the staff report online, but in the past, I think we've received the breakdown here. Second, I wanted to highlight again how much there is actually in District 2, and that's because District 2 is a high-needs area. Thank you, you know, to the good people over at the Cheesecake, you know, company here, but I want to remind folks that we have done a lot there, and it's one of the areas that needs consistent help. And I look-- Councilmember Lulowee, I look forward to joining you over there and talking about some of the work that we're going to continue to support over there. You know, before I forget, I want to echo the comments here on rental assistance. I want to thank, you know, the mayor and my colleagues that were on the council at the time. I think it was actually only three of us that were left here that took on rental assistance as an issue, and there was a lot of pushback at first. But the fact that, you know, we had the support at that time to get that going and start the SAR program, first at the city and then the county, and now we have a joint program. You know, it obviously has had its hiccups, but to say that it was needed is an understatement. So I think if there's anything we can do to continue on the rental assistance program and the feedback loop with both on the landlord's side and the tenant's side, I think it would be helpful. And then I want to-- I've had a question about this, and, you know, either my memory is forgetting me, or I haven't gotten a straight answer, but for CDBG funds, on the availability for acquisition, what are the restrictions if we were to use those funds for acquisition of land? Are they-- can they be-- are they only for housing, or could say there's a neighborhood that doesn't have a park and needs a community center, but it's not big enough for a park? What are the restrictions on for acquisition purposes?
It can be used for housing, any public facilities, parks, any of those.
To convert to a-- so a private property that, say, a blighted building that's been there for a long time, the property owner hasn't done anything with it, we could look at this as one of those potential options for acquisition for a better and higher use?
Yes.
Good. Okay, good. Because I think, you know, Councilmember Lulowee and I, you know, we have a lot of areas where there's a lot of blighted buildings or vacant land that maybe there might be a housing developer that may want to use that or look at that space or a community center or whatnot. But I think figuring out how we go after some of these blighted buildings is an important way. So thank you for clearing that up. I knew that housing was always kind of an option. I mean, we look at that as an opportunity, but I didn't know if there were other community uses that that could become because housing may not be a viable option in that situation. And then the last thing that I wanted to ask was, in some of our areas in older parts of the neighborhoods, they may have had or didn't have bathrooms, say, in their parks. And so could, you know, in many of these communities, if they're not-- if they have to use a bus or whatnot, they're not driving to the park. So having access to a bathroom when you've got a little kid, you're not going to get on the bus back to get back to your house. And I know that the concept on the city side in some areas has been, don't do any parks because people can just go home. Well, that's not a reality if you're relying on public transit or have to walk a long way. And I'm wondering if there's a way for us to look at some of the CDBG dollars to, if not build new bathrooms, at least improve the ones that have been shut down or have been built in the-- many of them built in the 1950s and have been closed up ever since. Is that an eligible use to repair, you know, bathrooms? It says no government buildings, but what about those aspects?
Yes, and in fact, we actually have funded some ADA bathroom projects, so repairing or building new, and they would just have to meet the ADA requirements there. I don't think there-- is there anything else to add, Christine?
I think, Vice Mayor, I think that's absolutely right. I think as long as it's an income-eligible area, just as your comment about land acquisition, as long as you were acquiring land for an activity in an area that was going to be CDBG eligible. That's your end result.
No, yeah, no, that's-- and that's fine. I understand CDBG dollars are specific. I know the northern part of my district doesn't have any areas that are CDBG eligible, but the southern part of my district has great need. Those also tend to be the areas where we don't have open space. We don't have-- and if we do have a park, they may not have a bathroom. Which leads me to my last question here. Acquisition of land and building a new park or an open space may be difficult. Does-- are there restrictions for us to, say, working with the school district to address maybe the access of their space to get an amenity for the community there? Is there an intergovernmental restriction, or where only cities and counties can apply for the money, or can you have a partnership in that sense?
I think you are allowed to have the partnerships. Oh, like Christine.
There we go. That is correct, as long as that area was to remain open to the public. So in other words, buying land that even the school district owns, but they couldn't close it off to the public, would have to be open.
And therein lies the point, because many times, the school districts will close off valuable open space and no longer be eligible for the general public, even though we have a viable space. So I think those are just some comments that I wanted to put in there. The last piece is that as you're developing your one-year plan, and I hope to sit down with staff, I hope that it's aligning with also our city's, you know, inclusive economic development strategies, are also our climate strategies of where we're looking at infill, that we're looking at making sure that we're overlapping our goals when we're trying to access dollars. I know, you know, the good work that we're doing down on the Stockton Boulevard South area, and I know SHRA is doing some projects down there, but I want to make sure that we're also aligning, because, you know, we have to be competitive. I think being able to match those dollars is important. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Guerra, I would have assumed you had just stole my notes, but you're on the opposite side of the dais. I have just some of the same thoughts and processes. As were the parents of young children, when you go to parks, bathrooms are premiums, and especially when we're looking at lower-income areas where people may not have vehicles. I know it's generally not within the city mantra to have bathrooms at community parks, but maybe strategically having us look at that. One of the things, while it's in Councilmember Lulowee's district, it now borders mine, and finishing the plans for the Robla Community Park, which should include a bathroom and community center, that's been 20 years in the making. I know we've started on the design, but continuing, that would benefit my area and his area as much. And then looking at how we could potentially-- is there land that school districts own that they're not using that could potentially benefit an area that qualifies for CBGG? Did I get it right? CDBG grants. You know, that's something in the future in my area and the Robla area. I know that's probably a year or two away. Would like to have that discussion, and then I'll set up an extra meeting because now that my area qualifies, I'd love to see D1 up there with a project because I do have a park or two that may need some help in upgrades or amenities. So, but thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, thank you. Thank you for the overview. As a new council member and new to this body as well, I just-- I appreciate having the overview and getting to learn about some of the projects that have been done or in the works. So pardon my ignorance on any of this. One of the questions I have is around, you know, how homelessness has been addressed in previous and years past with the CDBG grants. So for example, if you could describe some of the programs that were done in the last year, that'd be really helpful.
Yes. Christine, do you want to add?
Yeah, maybe I could help. Stephanie's doing a great job, but she's been on the job for like, what, five, six months? I'm not sure. So she's doing wonderful. So most of CDBG is really focused on the low-mod income areas and more capital improvements. That's not to say there aren't things that we can do with it to assist homelessness. For example, some of the public service dollars go to operate some of the homeless shelters, like the Salvation Army. That's probably the best category in CDBG to help with homelessness, but it's only 15%, and we also use it for meals on wheels to feed, you know, for seniors. So, you know, and if there's rehab, you know, we can put it into rehab being a facility that was going to be used for permanent housing for homeless, but those are really sort of the main things that could be done. Or infrastructure, you know, if there's streets or curbs or gutters outside of a homeless facility, that would also qualify.
Awesome. Thank you. And then in terms of, I don't know if this is something that SHRA already does or thinks about, but, you know, if there are projects that include housing, you know, is it ever-- some of this ever used to kind of make sure that some of those units can be used by people who are at risk of homelessness or have been homeless? Great. Thank you.
You know, maybe along Councilmember Maple's line of questioning a little bit, the thing that just strikes me here is, as the city is growing, are we going to be gaining more of these resources based on formula? Because it's-- what you do with this is, and what you recommend in this process is great. For a large city like ours, it just seems like a pittance of money from the federal government. Maybe it would have been different if, you know, some-- the housing aspect, for example, Build Back Better had been passed and included, but what-- give us a little big-picture context here, because it's not fair to say we're fighting over scraps, but given the needs of the community, it just seems like such a small amount of money. Am I wrong? Put it in perspective for us, please.
Well, Mayor, yes, you are correct. It doesn't seem like a lot of money. However, we did see a huge infusion through the emergency shelter grant during COVID. I mean, millions and millions. I think it was over, what, $14 million or so?
That's correct.
ANRPA and CARES, right? That boosted our CDBG temporarily.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we did see a huge infusion, but now we've returned back to the normal levels, which is very distressing when you think about the need and what we have. But a lot of this all really boils down to Congress and how much money they're going to appropriate for these categories. So even though the cities may be growing, they're the ones who actually set those dollar amounts, and that's where we advocate with them.
Yep.
To increase.
I mean, say the cliche, elections have consequences, right? There's no more, there won't be another Build Back Better in this Congress. In all likelihood, a big infusion of housing resources, something we have to grapple with. For now, for now. But anyways, that's not to take away from the importance of this process or the, the strategic focus that you have to spend the resources that, that we do have. We appreciate it. Okay?
There's another point also, too, is that the CDBG money, while it may seem like a small amount, sometimes it is the amount that's needed to be leveraged with other funds within the city. So, the city may have a huge capital improvement project, but still be short, and the CDBG money can be used to make that project go. And so, when we meet with the staff and we start talking about your projects, we may not be able to do the whole project, obviously, with CDBG, but then we look to the other pots of funding that the city has.
Sure.
To make it go.
Leverage.
It is.
Can you bond against any of this money? We've had that conversation, remember? Because that's the other housing question, Councilmember Maple, in a way, right? Can you, can you capitalize on any of this? And I remember I asked this maybe five times, and the answer was always the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's why it is important to talk to those congressional reps.
Yep, absolutely. We'll go back to cap to cap, or whenever you go back to DC, work it. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the second item here, which is the SHRA Affordable Housing Production Outlook for 2023, which is really the big, the big issue.
Yes, it is. And so, as you know, at our last budget meeting, we had an opportunity to actually show a video of all the different housing projects. And so, we thought we would show another video to show you kind of where we are, especially since we have new members who are on the council, and we thought this would be a great introduction. And so, we have about a five-minute video that's going to really kind of showcase which projects we have in the pipeline, which ones are actually going to be bringing units online this year, and all of the good work that's going on. So, if we could go ahead and start the video.
Oh, that was, that was excellent.
Mm-hmm.
Great overview.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela, I don't know if you saw, we used your, you were in one of the pictures.
Oh.
Did you see?
I saw that.
Yeah.
I was like, there's maybe.
Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yes, first, I just wanted to thank, you know, all the SHRA staff that, for, for their work on many of these projects. Some of them have taken a long time. You know, obviously, driving down Stockton Boulevard in my district and seeing the Mercy Housing Project going up so quickly is, is exciting to see. I mean, talk about an area that was blighted, we had fires there, and it's right adjacent to a elementary school, you know, you know, of a community that needs a lot, and, and a high school. And on, in a district where, we had a big warehouse there. You know, John's Furniture was once a great place. You know, I think, I think, I think Tom, in our community development department, actually bought his furniture there, you know, if I remember. But, but it seemed better days. And now, it's, it's going to be a hope, a beacon of hope for Stockton Boulevard. And other areas like the San Juan, you know, project, I think that, that, that's had a lot of complications over the time, and seeing the, how much we're moving forward in the production of housing is important. But I did have a question about particularly the San Juan site and the way we look at requiring specific amenities and, and what goes into that. And, you know, the, specifically, you know, and I didn't want to bring this up when we brought the vote up, because I think it was a celebratory event. It was, it was so difficult to get to that point. I mean, I think even back in 2015, trying to have a conversation about how do we parcel together, how do we deal with post-redevelopment, and leaving us with a, with a mess there. Where we are today is a positive place, but I was concerned that we are requiring the, one, we started with an idea of building a place with a childcare center, a workforce development center, and then ended up with a place with no childcare center, no workforce development center, and then a pool. And it may be oversimplifying to say we traded a pool for these other things, you know, and probably unfair, but, but in the eyes of like, where we've seen all of this, to me, I find that, you know, unfortunate. Some of that has to do with the, how tax credits are allocated. And if the point is that we have to be competitive and reduce the overall cost, then I question, why require in some of these areas a pool when you've got an eight, 11-minute bike ride, the Fruit Ridge Aquatic Center there, when you could have same amount of space for, say, a community center, or a community space, or some other type of space? And so, I, I guess I wonder that. You know, Sacramento's hot in the summer, but, you know, it's also pretty cold. And so, I wonder, what's the rationale in some of those requirements, and how do you make those determinations?
Sure. Christine Weigert with SHRA. I think the San Juan site, when SHRA had, of course, owned that land for some period of time, was purchased during redevelopment. And when we put it out for request proposals, mutual housing was the one that brought up the idea of a childcare center. We had never thought of that. But we did thought, think it was a good one. And we said, let's, let's go for it and see if we can get the funding for that together. They in turn, I think after maybe a nine-month period of time, maybe a little longer, so they just couldn't, it was just too expensive, and they were going to have to eliminate it from the, the project, which we thought, well, that's too bad, but, you know, we understood. And some of that was to do with the funding they could realize from tax credits and mortgage revenue bonds through the state of California. So, but the pool was always something that we had hoped to see there. It's something that we do not require on certainly senior projects or homeless projects. But we do like, if there's room and the opportunity to put a pool in a family project, we think it's important to give those low-income children, you know, the same opportunity that you might get in a market-rate housing development that's multifamily. They always have pools there. Certainly gives them something to do during the summer. We find that, especially on a busy, busy intersection like they are on Stockton Boulevard, where some parents might not feel comfortable letting their kids, you know, drive or ride their walker some distance to get to the pool. And it's sort of, it does really give them an opportunity to learn to swim. Oftentimes, we find in our low-income communities that if it's not there, they don't learn, and then that's sort of, you know, there's inequity there. So, it is something that we do encourage. There is a playground and a huge soccer field or play area on that side as well. We make sure the pools are really close to the leasing office, so that there's eyes on the pools and things like that. But it's something that we do encourage in our family projects.
Yeah, no, and I understand that. I don't question that one bit, okay? You know, I mean, I guess it's better than the days that I grew up out in Yolo County, where we learned to swim on a canal. But the, the, you know, in Iowa Street, you don't have to take Fruit Ridge to get down to the Aquatic Center. You can go down Iowa Street, you know, in, in a residential area to bike there. But my point is, you know, the purpose of having the spaces, such as an event, a community room or whatnot, is that you could do more programming that's other than just swimming, that's not just limited to one area, which was the purpose of. And, and just to be fair, for California Mutual Housing, it wasn't their idea, it was at the request of the community. Like, that was a, an interest from the community saying, we need, we have a shortage of childcare, so. And some of that is beyond SHRA's control, but I would, I would hope and urge that the level of relationships at the state level that SHRA has and, and being here, that it should be vocal in its advocacy to say that it's unfair to penalize a project for wanting to provide something that helps families out of poverty. Like, a, a project like these that are in, that are addressing such low-income families, needs to have the amenities that are going to help those families get out of that project, so that there are another family can come in. So, to me, I think that that was a, a bit of a frustration to see where, where that ended up. And in the future, when we're looking at these other projects, I think that there needs to be, and, you know, Mr. Mayor, I think part of our advocacy is, we need to be aggressive with the, say, whether it's the allocation, the tax allocation board or whethers, to start thinking, and our legislators as well, to think about, you know, how are we supporting the development, not just housing, but, but communities that help uplift people by having the amenities that they need. Work for onsite workforce centers, so that families don't have to drive somewhere else to go get the support they need to look at career opportunities. And some of our SHRA facilities do have that. And I think that's great, but I think that it has to be kind of the norm. So, all that to say is, you know, I appreciate all the great work that's been done. I think we're moving in those directions. But I would, I would love to have seen that project have, continue to have that. At the end of the day, that, if, if we hadn't gotten the community together, I want to thank Stephanie Francis out there for being such an advocate for moving on that space, it would have continued to become vacant. It would have, it was one of those where, because of the, the silos and bureaucracy and government, it would have continued to be a problem. But now there is actually something, and a positive thing happening there as well. More to come, but I appreciate that. I know there's other projects down the Boulevard, and we'd like to see how we can get a childcare center nearby and being able to support that, that effort. We'd love to see another workforce center. I know we're doing, we're having a workforce center that we're working with Aggie Square. We have the adult school at Charles A. Jones on Lemon Hill, but, but I think having them in, in with the residents is, is important. So, with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, and thank you for the snazzy video. It was a nice break in the presentation style. I enjoyed it. I, you know, everybody went to State of Downtown this morning, and it was a really cool event to celebrate the Central City. But I think what folks don't often know, which we've talked about, is that we actually have the most regulated affordable housing units in, in the entire city. So, I get to talk to these two a lot about renovations, about new projects. And I just want to applaud you for all the work you've been doing on Capitol Park, as well as Central City Studios, and so many other units. We are on track to have a couple hundred more permanent units in downtown in the next year, which is a drop in the bucket, but just so exciting. And I know it wouldn't have happened if you all hadn't searched and scrouched and gotten all of the little bits. And when I saw Mary Saw Block D come up on here, I remember these two were like, we are going to find this funding before the funding goes away, and you searched and searched and searched. So, it's, it's really exciting to see it all together like this, because I think we lose sight in the mix of all of these little project votes and loan term agreements and different steps, just how much of an impact has been made. And I do want to reiterate what the mayor said, and sort of our advocacy opportunity here as a city, which is, you know, here we had all of this unprecedented one-time money, and we used a lot of it to help create gap financing for these critical projects, and now it's gone. And what does that look like for us moving forward? But I, I don't want to tarnish too much with talking of that, but more just to celebrate and thank you all for your work on those projects. I'm really looking forward to going to the ribbon cutting at those and seeing families move into them. And, yeah, I just want to thank you again for all you did to make all of those slides happen in that video, because that's a lot of work.
Thank you. Those are real lives, a real opportunity. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I think accolades have been given to the staff and everybody who does the work out there. And I just want to stop and acknowledge a person who I've long, known for a long time, who is the leader of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Organization, who is the one who has pushed this for, I can't even count how many years. And I think she would be mad at me if I told how many years, because it might help you understand maybe how old she is. But Michelle Dozier has just been an incredible leader, person who gets things done. Not only a leader, but a, a great partner, someone who you can count on, somebody who you can give responsibility and not have to overlook it every second to make sure it gets done. And the work that she does is second to none. And so, I just want to make her smile today, because today's a good day. You come with your plan for this year, but every year, you've had a plan that has got Sacramento to where it is today. And so, I just want to thank you personally.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to ideas from members not on the agenda. Any? Okay, how about public comments on items not on the agenda? I know Mr. Davis was on board, so let's hear from Mr. Davis and anybody else.
I have one hand raised. Lambert Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert. And I, I did want to, to say that you should give, I guess her name is Lynette Hall, because she's been sending me things about District Two. That's, that's impressive, because I'm not a big fan of impressive, because I'm not a big fan of technology like some are. But I did want to say that District Two, which I was born and raised in, it has over 20 communities. And I've never seen that many communities. As a matter of fact, I called every district in Sacramento and asked them, how many dis how many communities do you have? And not one district had over 10. Why do I say that? Because if you know math, if $5 million comes into a district and they have 10 communities, that means if they do it equitably, $500,000 would go to each community. That's a game changer. But when you have a district like District Two, which is one of the most gerrymandered districts I've ever studied, then even if you divided it into 23 districts, 23 communities, you see the the less of the impact of the money. And so that's why I want the mayor to come to Del Paso Heights and speak to them, speak to the community. The ones who won the championship, they have parents and grandparents. I know most of them. And they need jobs. You know, it's good to win the championship, but they need jobs. They're teenagers. So let's let's focus in on that and make sure. And there's $5 million right now floating around. Where is it? You've got 23 communities, and some of them are called.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. You have no more speakers.
Right. Members, we do have a closed session at 4:00, and then a meeting of the City Council at 5:00. I thank you very much, Ms. Dozier and your team. It's a very productive session. If there's nothing else to come before us, we are adjourned.